Call the Eastline Board of Education meeting to order for October twenty six, two thousand and twenty. At whatever time it is, five oh something. And. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, so I'll call the meeting to order. And the first item up is public comment. Which we received fifteen written comments from the public, very well written, very well thought through. Um, it's a total of sixteen pages, single spaced, um, so. Uh, I have gone through them and I'm going to just give the, uh, the names of the people that have commented and a couple of highlights from their comments, kind of the. Bottom line conclusion as well. All of our board members have of the comments they were sent out ahead of time. They're also on board docs and I. And my understanding is, is that everybody. Has access to the comments off of, of, off of. Board doc, so, uh, and there certainly can be, can be obtained from the superintendent's office as well. Uh, so with that. That's clear. Uh, I, and I think, I believe Jeff that the comments were, were, were given to us in order as. They were received, um, so there's no, they're not, they're not sorted or anything, so it's just, it's kind of like first, first one that they commented and then. All the way through to the fifteenth person.
Exactly. That was basically the order of, of today for the most rate.
Okay, so the first one is from Dean and I apologize to people, I'm gonna murder people's names. Um, never been very good at pronunciation, but the first one is from Dean Accardi. Uh, and basically he opens with, uh, on October fifteenth, these lines was one of the only eleven towns across the entirety of Connecticut to be. Put officially on high alert for COVID infections. Uh, this fact is due to the number of infections in the last few weeks, they've been increasing. Uh, his bottom line really is in short, as painful it might be for all of us, it is time that we admit that the dreaded second wave of the coronavirus. Is already upon us and that our current hybrid schooling. Was not working and for the safety of our children and the entire community, we must decide to transition to. A robust five days a week remote learning program before it's too late. And that's from Dean and he gives some, some references as well, very, very, all, all these have done very well. The second, the second, uh, public comment that we have is from. Liz Dumont, uh, from ten Acorn Drive, Niantic. Uh, and her, uh, is basically, I am, uh, Liz Demond, I live at ten Acorn, uh, Drive, I have two children, these slime schools. Uh, one is a freshman at the high school, one is a sixth grader. She goes on. To thank Amy for sending out the survey and asking for opinions. Uh, she also goes in and presents, uh, it is very important to hear a description. Of the other three days of school when is the sixth grader is at home and she gives a very nice, uh, description of what, what transpires. Um, I am not. Get to the bottom line, I am not switched to full zoom days, but I do believe that. There is a need for more daily contact between students, teachers that is structured and purpose driven. I just don't see how we can continue to operate. Current pace and with our children, this disengaged. Okay, so that's from Liz. The third public comment, uh, is from Meg Biggs. Uh, this letter is being written in support of full-time reopening of our district. Uh, she goes on to give some, some rationales around it, um, one in particular extended school closures have an impact. Uh, on children's social and emotional skills. Please re- the school to allow, uh, for a sense. Of normalcy because the current plan is not working at, on many levels. That's from Meg Biggs. The fourth. The fourth public comment is from Catherine TMB, who's a MD. Uh, let's see, she, um, basically, uh, gives, uh, lots of, um, information. Uh, children's, uh, the ages between zero to fifteen years of age are at a remarkably low risk of death for, from COVID. Mental health is another issue that must be addressed and with children. In my small practice, I have seen changes in children. That I would, would have never guessed, um, again, stress, he's stressing the, the point about, um. The isolation, uh, part and the lack of socialization. There have been no cases identified where kids spread COVID among. Each others or to the teachers. I am cert- I am not certain that a switch to full zoom days, oops, I'm sorry, uh, uh, I jumped the wrong one. There are quite a few schools around us that have done well, uh, with full opening since Labor Day. And, and, uh. Basically, she stresses that, uh. Uh, yeah, they, it should, we should be opening. She also says that she would like to remind you and the board, that you being the superintendent. There are plenty of qualified pediatricians in the town who are learning daily about the virus, uh, both at work and at home. Uh, so she's, she's basically saying we should, we should leverage, uh, the pediatricians that we have access to. Uh, the fifth public comment from Nicole Moskato, Moskato, uh, Seven Darrow's Ridge, East Line. Uh, I am, I write not only as a concerned parent of three East Line students. Uh, but also as a collective voice, uh, of, for over two hundred parents within East Line who are concerned with the education that our students. Are receiving, um, and she.
Tim, I think you're cutting.
Did I get?
I don't know, was he cutting, was that on me or is that, he started to cut out, Tim?
Did I?
Eric, I think you're cutting out.
Oh.
Eric's cutting out.
Okay.
Jeff, power, how was it?
You're, you're okay, am I in?
Huh, okay.
If that's me, then it must be me, Tim.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I keep hanging out second. There we go, okay. Alright, so. Can I, I continue? Jeff, is okay? Okay, on public comment number five, um, and that's again from Nicole Moskato. I write not only as a concerned parent of three East Line students, but, but boys. Uh, over two hundred parents within East Line who are concerned with the education that our, uh, East Line students are receiving. Over two hundred parents have signed the following petition when she gives a link, um, to that. Therefore, and there's lots of detail, uh, therefore, we are collectively asking the Board of Education and the District to reevaluate the current model. Uh, and adapt in ways to provide a better, more engaged, rigorous model that. That the current sixty percent asynchronous and forty percent synchronous model that we are employing. Uh, our children and our children's education and development depend on this committee making this a priority and enacting for change. The, uh, sixth public comment is from. Get it right, uh, Nyla Kazor, okay? As a parent of a second grade, uh, student, uh, and a middle school student, I can honestly say that their education. That they are receiving is completely different as it should be. But being that, but, but that being said, I am disappointed with the amount of face-to-face instruction that my middle school child is receiving. I'm very glad to see, I'm glad to see the survey went out asking parents for their input. I feel that the amount of work my child, uh, is being given at the middle school, the sixth grader is not enough. Why can't teachers give instruction during that, during that time, whoops, I'm sorry. During that time, have students stay on who need extra support and then assign work for what they were just taught so that they can do it independently. And in, in turn. Uh, my, in my opinion, three point five hours zoom is not, is not the right answer either. And then she gives basically a proposal for a system suggested, um, proposals for schedules, uh, at the elementary, uh. Wednesday model and the middle school Wednesday model as well. The seventh comment is from Kurt Kazor. Uh, and he's, he said, says, I'm writing this letter because I'm concerned that our children are not getting the education they deserve. They should go back to school full-time for their emotional and educational needs. I am a teacher at old lime, uh, at lime, old lime schools where we are using the normal school model. And we're having a high level of success with no known cases to date. It's time to go back, uh, full, it's time to go back full-time and that's from Kurt. The eighth, uh, comment, public comment from Jason Cordes. Uh, the current hybrid model, while a good choice at the beginning of the year has run its course and needs to be altered in order to prevent our students. From falling significantly behind in, uh, our neighboring towns. There are two options that should be considered. Full in-person learning or an improved hybrid model. And, uh, he again goes on to say about the old lime, old lime school district only a quarter mile from my home has had full in-person. Classes since the start of the, why can't we, Groton has, uh, have an improved hybrid model with synchronous learning on off days, why can't we? Uh, we can and should do better for our students and our teachers and our town. That's from Jason. Public comment number nine is from Nathaniel Duker, who's an MD. I am writing, uh, in support of returning to in-person learning in our, in our school systems. Recent reviews of data both locally and nationally has shown that children in school are not significantly, are not significant spreaders of the virus, especially at. The younger ages. Um, additionally, the those who work in public schools has also been shown to be very low. Detrimental effects of hybrid and remote learning are not just educational, but also social and emotional. Uh, these kids deserve some normalcy. I believe getting back to school is a great way for our community to start to recover from this pandemic and move forward. That's from. Daniel. Uh, a public comment number ten, which is from Kevin and Amy Stefanski. Uh. My wife and I have never submitted a letter to an East Line, uh, town official asking for something to change, but the. Physical and emotional, uh, health of our children, uh, and those in our community, we feel compelled to do it this time. We have a freshman at the slime, at East Line High School and a seventh grader in the middle school, we both. Uh, support full in-person learn, uh, when leading indicator, uh, when the leading indicator of new COVID cases per one hundred thousand. Uh, population per day is less than twenty-five in East Line. If full in-person learning is not something the Board of Education will support. Then as an alternative, we would prefer five days of synchronous learning, replacing two, the two synchronous and three asynchronous hybrid plans currently in place. That's from Kevin and Amy Stefanski. Comment number eleven is from Jeffrey Salick, who's an MD and Allison Sal, uh, who's also is an MD. We are writing to inform you of our disappointment that the East Line School System. Has not yet reverted to five days per week, uh, learning. And they go through a whole bunch of, a bunch of very specific, uh, facts and data. We, and we, and it's also some references. We urge the school board to reopen the sign public schools and resume, and resume five days. Uh, a week in all of our, in all of our schools. And then they provide also, um, some references as well, uh, with lots of, um. Data, so that's a public comment number. Eleven, let's see. Missing. It's eleven, yeah, twelve. Okay, the number twelve. Is from John Glover. Uh, I believe East Line can do better to increase the student, teacher contact and deliver curriculum in a more effective manner than offered. I understand the decisions, the, the decision to stay in the hybrid model of a, of a teacher, I think this model needs to be adjusted. Students need more direct contact and interaction with their teachers and classes. Uh, as a whole, this can be accomplished with Zoom, Google Classroom and a host of other technology platforms. And John has, again, that there's lots more, um, detail that he provides as well. Uh, number thirteen, public comment from Steve Gar- 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 Adrian, I think that that's how to pronounce it, and Chris Talk. We are writing to get to good clarity around the current East Line hybrid model. And why our town's teachers are not able to deliver virtual or in-person learning five days a week. Under the current model, we feel our children are not receiving a full education and we are very concerned on the long-term negative impacts. Of, of that. And again, and again, make a one, give, give some more, more detail about their, their, um, two boys. Uh, public comment number fourteen, which is from Jamie Keef. I appreciate the district is, is currently surveying the East Line Middle School families and students to see what their thoughts are. With the current hybrid model. I want to share with the board that I am satisfied with the current hybrid model in which my children attend two days. And participate in daily Zoom meetings on their remote days and complete, uh, both paper. Uh, and seesaw, Google Classroom assignments asynchronously. Any changes were to be made to the current model, I would actually prefer you, uh, prefer you look at the COVID transmission rates in the schools and consider moving students. To a four-day, uh, school model. I would much prefer this, um. Prefer this model than adding additional time with students zooming in the classrooms. I appreciate your efforts to gather feedback. And try to do the very best for the students of East Line. And last public comment number fifteen. Which is from Carla Serone, PhD. It is time to fully reopen the East Line Public Schools. We now have data from several sources. Uh, children in schools do not spread COVID, schools are not sources of spreading COVID. And she, and she goes on with several more, uh, of points filled with data. The damage being done to our children by keeping them out of, out of schools far outweighs the minimal risks of fully reopen. And then again, it's from Carla Serone. So that's, that's the fifteen public comments I, and I apologize if I did, if I, my reading through them and trying to pull out. Uh, the key essential points, if I've missed something, uh, I certainly apologize that every one of the comments were written with, I would say. Considerable sincerity and, and, and certainly thought, um, and, uh, and, and with lots of, uh, information and data, which I'm sure that the, for all board members are. I have, 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 will, will have a chance to study it, um, and later on the evening and our, in our discussions, we will be talking specifically about. Uh, uh, what, what we're going to be doing in terms of continuing the school, uh, the school, um, situation, so. With that, uh, Jeff, um, anything that I, that I, did I cover them all or do anybody checking?
No, that was, yeah, I was going through the list, Tim, as you were talking, so I checked off, uh, all fifteen.
Okay, good.
Tim, do you mind if we just note that all of the public comments will be posted to the Board of Ed meeting minutes in their entirety?
Yes, yes, good point, great, thanks.
My comment wasn't read in its entirety, you missed the last point about how we're not meeting the state minimum standards with the hybrid model.
Yes, I, yes, Carla, yes, I, I, yes, I, yes, I apologize, yes.
And why we need to fully reopen.
Yep, thank, thank you very much. And I, and I, you know, again, the information was, is fantastic, is fantastic and the thoughts that, that everybody, uh, provided were, were. Um, were, were right on, I mean, in terms of, uh, very well done. Okay, so, uh, we do not have a consent agenda, uh, we do have some minutes to approve, uh, from our October thirteenth, uh, board meeting, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, anybody would like to make a motion on the approval of the minutes from the thirteenth?
I would like to make a motion, Jamie, to approve the minutes of our regularly scheduled October thirteenth meeting.
Okay, okay, can a second said, any corrections, modifications to those minutes, anything, buddy? No? Okay, uh, I was in favor of approval of minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anybody oppose? Uh, would anybody like to abstain? Uh, Bill, and I think, uh, Lee, were you, I don't think Lee was on the, and Lee, okay, you raised your hand, okay, so they, Bill and Lee. Okay, uh, do we, so we move on to special reports, uh, do we have a selectman representative, um, Jeff, did you see anybody pop in?
I didn't see anybody, I don't know, uh, Jack, if you saw anybody, I'm looking.
See any selectmen or, uh, student reps.
Okay, okay, so. We will just keep an eye on the case.
And Saatchi is at her soccer game, so she's not able to attend.
Okay, good, thanks, Eric. Okay, so we'll move right into our discussion, action items for the evening under instruction. Uh, discussion of the East Line Public School, uh, twenty twenty-one continued, uh, school progress and, um, Jeff, um, I guess I'll just turn that right over to you.
Thank you, Tim, and, uh, appreciate you, we've got a lot of, a lot of parent feedback, um, a lot of varied, uh, you know, thoughts, ideas, recommendations. Um, yeah, I, I just want to go back to, you know, the end of the summer, you know, our, our intent with the hybrid model was, you know, to be hopefully going in full. Person by October, we were going to reassess on October one, which we did, and, uh, you know, the numbers started to skyrocket right at that time for transmissions across the state. Um, I mean, the good news, we have, in, in, we've said this numerous times. We've not seen transmissions occurring in the schools, you know, between staff, between students, between students to staff. Um, and that's pretty, very consistent across the state, so that, that's a piece of, of great data and information that, you know, we did not have. You know, when we started off and opened up, you know, in the hybrid model. Um, we have, you know, received again, a lot of parent feedback, uh, a lot of thoughts, we've had a lot of discussions too. We've made, uh, you know, that adjustment at the high school level after coming back from being remote, uh, for the two-week closure that, uh, was, uh, had occurred of the building. Um, and we, uh, started last Thursday with the students, you know, zooming in on their off days. Um, someone have Deb Kelly just kind of talked about how that's gone so far in just a minute, uh, and then also. Middle school level is, everybody is aware, you know, we sent out that survey to parents and students, um, just received, you know, that information as of twelve noon, when it closed this afternoon. We've not had an opportunity to disaggregate, you know, that, uh, that data yet, but we did put, you know, the, the survey results up so everybody could see those. Um, so at least it gives us an indication of, uh, you know, some good feedback, um, so everybody can kind of take a look at those, you know, we, we can, we can talk about those, but we. Need to bring those and I'm gonna have Mr. Bitgood just talk about, you know, next steps with that at the middle school because he hasn't even had a chance to talk to the middle school staff about that and we need to really do that first. Have some conversations with, uh, with the staff. So, um, with that being said, why don't we kind of hear from Deb, you know, at the high school level first, and then we can talk with Jason, you know, at the middle school level. Uh, and then, you know, we can, we want to talk elementary as well, we, we can, but let's start at those two areas, uh, first. Uh, as some things have changed at the high schools, Deb, let me turn it over to you and just share out, uh, if you don't mind about that, uh, that process and, and where we landed with this past Thursday.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. Um, well, today finished day three of, uh, the cohort who isn't in school zooming in, uh, to their classes. And I had an opportunity to chat with some students today who were home on Thursday and Friday and zooming in, uh, and, I mean. Their feedback about it was it, it's a change. They had to get up at seven thirty in the morning and start zooming in. And some of them said that, you know, some of the zooming seemed long and it was hard for them to concentrate. But sort of the overall feeling was that it was a lot more close to normal. Um, than what they had been doing before because it was a day at school, it was a day seeing their teachers and, um, they seem to be happy about that. Um, I also talked to our CILs this afternoon about how they think that it's going and I think really from the teacher's perspective, this is helping with planning a lot. Uh, they're still getting used to figuring out how the, to do the mechanics of the technology really, especially if you're sharing a screen. How you see the kids in the classroom and the kids on the computer and, and deal with all of those, but they're sharing a lot of really creative ideas and. Um, adjusting how they do that, um, but I think there, there's a sense of relief over the planning side of things for them, it's, it's definitely. Used some of the time commitment that they've had toward, uh, planning for their classes.
Thanks, Deb. Appreciate it, we, we can come, why don't we go to Jason, we'll talk about the middle school and obviously we'll come back and we can talk through any, you know, questions and, and further discussion points, but. Um, Jason, just, uh, as it pertains to the middle school, again, you know, the, the survey, we just, we got the results, you know, as of noon today as it closed, but. Want to just kind of talk about some of your next steps, your thoughts?
Yeah, sure thing. So thanks, everyone, um, and thanks for having me speak tonight. Want to thank everybody, parents out there, if you're listening, we really appreciate the feedback on that survey. And our goal all along has been to just continually improve the model and, um, and, and hopefully we can do that with the data, but I think the data is really, um, important to us. It's great to hear the students' perspective as well. I think that's a really important piece of information as well. We try to talk to children every single day. Just to see how they're doing through both the social and emotional lens and academically, so I'm really, um, curious to kind of get into the data. I gave it a quick glance today, but we'll get into it tomorrow. So let me talk about our structure at East Line Middle School a little bit. We have a team leader structure, so we have one person from each team. We meet with them, um, on a weekly basis. We also have what you would, we call them curriculum fellows, you might know that name is department heads. We had a chance to meet today as well, and what we did, we took a dive into our asynchronous lessons, so we had all of our departments share out to actually see. Um, across all our departments, what an asynchronous lesson could look like. So that was really important for us as well, and it's really great for a math teacher to look at what a language arts lesson looks like. They don't have that chance during the day because they're. Busy with math or they're busy with LA or science, social studies and life arts, so that was important for us, so I think that kind of laid the foundation for tomorrow's meeting. Um, Amy's gonna join us tomorrow at the middle school while virtually for our meeting, we'll spend some time, uh, with my two assistants as well, going over that data tomorrow to kind of look at that and then. Think about what the next steps are. I will say though, that our, our, I want to just do a shout out to our teachers. They've worked really hard. We have a fairly robust virtual, um, Viking population at East Line Middle School right now, and that's really great, and the teachers have. Really, um, come up to speed in a very short amount of time with what that looks like in a classroom and how you do that and how you pull that off effectively, so again. Teachers are working really hard, learning technologies that six or seven months ago were really quite foreign to them, and so now they've stepped up and done a terrific job, so I just wanted to mention that on their behalf. So thanks, everyone, I appreciate that chance to talk about our models.
Thanks, Jason, and, you know, we're, we've been trying to kind of attack this level by level. Obviously, we started at the high school, we made the change there, you know, now we're at the middle school level. I have a chance to talk further tomorrow, as Jason mentioned, you know, with the team leaders and, you know, some of the middle school staff members. Um, and I think the next, uh, component is, you know, taking a look at, you know, at the elementary level. Our elementary principals are here, I did not ask them to give an update, we hadn't, uh, you know, made any changes or adjustments or did any survey yet at the elementary level. Yeah, we're trying to take this, you know, one, one, uh, section at a time, uh, per se, but, um, you know, Danielle, Melissa or Jeff, any share outs as to. Any feedback you've received or how things are, are going at, uh, at your level as of, you know, the last week or so?
Um, I, I mean, I can start. I really have not received parent communication, um, either way. Um, either for the current model that we're in or going all remote or going, um, fullback, I mean, I know. That parents, a lot, there are a lot of parents who would wish we would come all back and I think a lot of it is the social, emotional aspect. As well as the difficulty that children of our age. Uh, they're having learning from home, sitting in front of a screen, um, a, a child really can't be successful in the elementary without the support of a parent. A, a child really can't be successful in the elementary without the support of a parent, which I know is putting a large burden on the parents to support their children at home. So the only way asynchronous is successful is when parents are supporting us. So definitely a lot of stress in the homes as a result of that. But I can't say that I've gotten a lot of feedback either for either way. You know, and I, I figured that at some point in time, as an administrative team, we would start talking about the elementary model as well. Like you had indicated, Jafta, I know you started with the, the high school and down to the middle school, so I figured we'd be next.
Jeffrey, thanks, Melissa. Jeffrey, Daniel?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in. You know, I, I agree with Melissa. I haven't had a lot of parent contact either way. At the beginning, we, we had quite a bit of contact in terms of the Wednesdays and not being in favor of the amount of, of time on Zoom at the elementary school on Wednesdays. And so we did make a change to that model, which, you know, it, it's funny with this. It's, it's kind of half and half, right? If you make a change one way, you know, some other people aren't happy necessarily. So, but what I, I guess what I really want to say is, you know, I was, I was the chair of the committee for, you know, the logistics reopening of our schools. And I think what sometimes people forget is there is guidance and requirements in those documents that came from the governor to reopen schools. And we're doing those things right now in the hybrid model. And we're able to, to, to be able to meet those requirements in the hybrid model. If we don't do the hybrid model, we can't meet those because of the size of our districts and the classrooms and the schools. So I think that, you know, I understand the, the concerns with it. But I also understand the requirements and the guidance haven't been the chair of that committee. So we're trying to walk a really interesting line here. We're trying to provide for kids at the same time, we're trying to keep them safe, and I think that we need to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Danielle, any final thoughts at the elementary level?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that too. I've definitely heard, you know, varying responses and feedback from parents from wanting to go full in to, you know, wanting to be full out. And then our virtual Vikings, I appreciate all that feedback. And, you know, at our weekly meetings, we're talking about that and trying to make positive change, you know, whenever we can. I definitely understand from the elementary perspective, you know, it can be challenging to have, you know, children sitting for long periods of time in front of the Zoom, as you know, Jeff has said. And the social emotional component of the elementary level is huge, you know, kids connecting with their teachers. And that's why we've tried the model that we have now, but I think it's just important to continue the communication. As I said, I appreciate all the parent feedback and, you know, just continuing to look at it and evaluate to see what's best for our kids.
Thanks, Danielle. I just want to share my screen for a second quick and just reference to, I put this in our weekly update Friday. Addendum four, this is new, newly revised, you know, as of October twenty first, which was, you know, last week that we had received this. And it, it kind of, it, they revamped, you know, this table as it pertains to, you know, in-person learning versus hybrid versus, you know, being remote or what they're now calling, you know, less in-person learning. I talked with Ledge Light Health District about it, you know, again, this morning. I talked to our medical advisor as well, you know, today. And just to recap, Eastline, you know, is, you know, back in the orange now. We're no longer in the red, which is good. So we're going in the right direction. More towards that, that direction, but we're, you know, we're still sitting here on, on this side of the, of the chart in the, the orange area. And, you know, the Department of Public Health, you know, focuses on, you know, at, at that stage, you know, the hybrid learning model. But, you know, my discussions with Ledge Light today and our medical advisor, there's a lot of factors that go into that. You know, whether, you know, you remain in hybrid or you try and go, you know, more in-person or you stay and, and go remote. And it's not just as easy as looking at a chart and saying, here's your numbers. Okay, that's where you, you know, that's where you stay. There's a lot of factors, and that's what we're trying to kind of work through collaboratively as to, you know, what, what are going to be our next, you know, our next steps with this and timing of potentially, you know, trying to get back to, you know, full in-person learning. And a lot will depend on, you know, the numbers, and we're, we're tracking them daily and, and weekly. So I just wanted to reference addendum four again, for, for everybody. With that being said, why don't I turn it over and we can talk about question, oh, and, and maybe just, just quick before questions. Let me just, let's do a virtual Viking update quick. Amy, can you just, the numbers, report on the numbers and, you know, where we're at with, with those right now? Just so everybody has that information, that's important.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so our virtual Viking numbers right now, we're at three twenty-two. Altogether, we have a hundred and sixteen virtual Vikings at the elementary level. We have a hundred and six virtual Vikings at the middle school level. We have exactly one hundred at the high school level.
And the changes, Amy, that have occurred recently has been ongoing cohorting that has happened, as we know.
Correct. So we have now noticed that at the high school level, the requests are to move to virtual Viking. But we're also noticing that we have had some requests of students moving to Viking four. So it's either, it's either one or the other, where they are coming four days a week because they were eligible and they had decided to cohort first. And then they decided, you know, it's better off for my child with their individualized plan that they go four days a week. Or we have, in particular, I am pretty much daily getting requests for high school students to move to virtual Viking at this point.
All right, why don't we thank you, Amy? We'll, we'll stop there. Let's open up for discussion, you know, Tim, I'll turn it back over to you. I know Candace and Eric have their hands up. I'm not sure who was first, but.
Okay, Eric, go ahead and then Candace.
Thanks. So thanks for all this information and thanks for all the parents. You know, I have some comments and then I have a couple of questions. So, you know, there's, that's a lot of public comments. So really appreciate that. And, and, you know, I think any of us walking in, stopping shop or wherever, people have given opinions. And, and the one thing I can conclude is, this is a really hard problem and there's no right answer, right? And even if you look, I just quickly looked at the middle school analytics and it's, it's, you know, half say we should do this, half say we should do this, or one-third says this, one-third says this, one-third says this. It's hard. We don't have the, you know, there's no right answer that we know of. So I, I think that's kind of what we're going in and we're trying to do the, what's best. So with that, then I kind of go, you know, the one thing that I would be against right now would be full distant learning. Because if someone, if any parent wants to do that, we have virtual Viking. Otherwise, you know, we need to figure out something else and where the cases are and everything. It seems like we, we should try to have our students in school as much as we can. So then the question is, you know, hybrid versus full, full-time, like five days a week, full-time. Which you hear a lot of people proponents for that. So my question kind of goes to that model. Because that's, that's ideal, and I guess if everyone's wearing masks and we're not seeing it being transmitted in schools, then, then, you know, that's where I'd like to be. But the problem is, and Jeff, I, I think that the biggest con of that model is when there is a case, we're shutting everything down. Everybody's, we're, we're going to have this same, a day here, we're going to shut down the day there, we're going to shut down. And then when we shut down, if we shut down for two days or whatever, it's everybody for two days. The benefit for me with the cohorts is if something happens with cohort A on a Tuesday, Thursday cohort B is back in, is back in school. So the splitting and, and the reducing density does have some advantages of at least being some in school. So that's, but I want to just make sure, is there any other? Is that the con of five days a week? And is there, are there any other cons to that? Like, why wouldn't we be, if someone asks, why aren't we five days a week? That, for me, seems like the biggest challenge.
Yeah, that, that's definitely, that's definitely one of them. I think, you know, the, the other challenge, obviously, even though, you know, the, again, the mitigation measures are, are working. You know, we, we have been able to, to maintain as much as possible. We can never guarantee it, but we've been able to maintain as much as possible out of the distancing. You know, the, the six feet apart, you know, in classrooms. By going full in, especially, you know, we're really talking that secondary level, that becomes everywhere. But it becomes very, very challenging because of the number of kids, you know, in the, in the building, if you go full in. And that's some of the, you know, the, the feedback from, you know, the health department as, as an issue.
So in other words, we haven't seen the transmission, but part of that, it could be because of what we're doing is preventing that. And if we go full back, we may start seeing more transmissions and across in school as we're not able to social distance and you just have the density increases significantly.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't know the answer to that, but it obviously, it would be, there's.
There's more way to know that, there's no way to know the answer to that without doing it, which.
I know. There's, there's more opportunity for it to occur, I guess, because of, of that, you know, at that model, especially at that secondary level.
Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody. I mean, certainly, we, we have to try to find the balance that's best for Eastline here. And it's not easy, you know, we're to, I think I've said it every single meeting, even through the summertime, starting that, you know, there's no easy part to this. Hard just doesn't even sum it up. Everybody's having their own experience. There's lots of challenges and there's lots of moving parts. I want to address a few things, actually. I want to address the two petitions that we have going on. Because I believe that they are a result of not surveying our people. And I started asking for surveys at the end of September, and I'm going to refrain from saying I told you so. But I am going to continue to say that we should have been surveying our people. People were waiting for a survey. I fully understand. We all kind of wanted to get everybody back in person. Got set back a little bit, but at that meeting, I said, I don't want to close the door on this. You know, I want us to keep having conversations and honestly, stay on the road to in-person and not on the road to going to remote. In the beginning of all of this coming back in the fall, we all have identified and it's realistic. And it's just the best form of education is in person. If we cannot have in-person, having a hybrid model is the, the, the next best. It is, you know, there's no, there's no perfect answer, and, and I'm not suggesting that there is. But I am suggesting that, A, active listening skills go a really long way. And I know that we have all, and I have commended everyone on the shifts and the constant rebalance. And, you know, everybody is putting in day and night, and it's tireless and it's thankless. But we have to keep working at it. Those petitions, the one, I'm going to talk about, the first one is student-led. And from my, my take from it is really more about not being heard. And that it's really the kids that are really seeing the brunt of, of quite a few things. And I just, I want people to acknowledge that perspective, and I think that it's incredibly important. And I, I know Mrs. Kelly and that team at the Eastline High School, and, and I know all of our administratives are working hard at that piece and, and trying to help. So some of the things that I read, not just from the petition, but the email is almost as though a cry is overwhelmed. And what we can do administratively to help those specific kids and those specific families to find their balance, to, to find, you know, their strategies that are going to help them. Maybe not feel so overwhelmed. Partly in that petition, I think it was an assumption of now we're going to be in front of a computer for six to seven hours per day, and that's it. And I, my, I think that that's a misunderstanding. It's not certainly what I predicted is how it was supposed to be ruled out or put modeled for kids. Yes, log in at seven thirty, but instead of some kids rolling back into bed, they're actually going to actually be, you know, accountable for their day, which is great, with breaks and with breakouts and all different types of, of movement. So correct me if I'm wrong, but my interpretation of what these two additional days on from what they were off is really not sitting in front of a computer for six hours, but is being broken up. And that is some of the feedback that I have been getting, not just from my own student, but from others also. So I just want to urge to maybe connect, and, and I know that Mrs. Kelly does a tremendous job with that. And your calm demeanor is amazing, and I think that we can really reach out to those specific students that might be having trouble with that change, and not just that change, I think, all of the changes. That's kind of what I got from that email. There's a lot. And, you know, we're, we're, in our daily lives, we come across people that are doing okay, and then we're coming across folks that aren't. And, you know, I just think that we need to, to adhere and maybe help a little bit there. The second petition is parent-driven, and I think possibly, A, not being heard, B, not having a survey, and possibly taking into consideration the change that was made at the high school, the the comments that came afterwards, I think that maybe people were fearful that because there was some backlash with the high school change, that might change the possibility of creating a, a different hybrid model at the middle school and the elementary school level. So I think that people want to be heard, and I don't blame them. I think that, well, I don't think, I know, reading these comments. You know, I can identify with about ninety-eight percent of the, everything that people are saying, just as a parent here in this community. I think that people are fearful that their children are not getting enough. I keep hearing not enough, not rigorous enough, more direct contact is needed, four-day model, full in-person. I know it's a lot, but we have to keep listening and we have to keep rebalancing. The surveys tell us a tremendous amount. And when we, when I first, at the end of September, the survey that I was specifically looking for at that moment was more of in-person or virtual Viking, pretty much. That's, that's what, because that's the context in which we were talking about. We were talking about a reassessment. So I believe that that should be going out. I, I think that we need to take a pulse of our community. Right now, I'm hearing three twenty-three, I think I wrote down, three twenty-two, excuse me, for virtual Viking. So if it was put out, you know, we were going to go in person, we would be able to get a feel from our community and from our families, whether or not they would plan to come in person or if they would choose the virtual Viking model. So I think that it's a good pulse. And then, of course, continuously surveying our teachers and seeing where they're at and what they're feeling. I think that they, you know, the change with the Wednesday, I've heard is helping quite a bit. I think that also the change at the high school for the four-day, I'm hearing is, is going to be helping also. But I kind of feel like we're more looking at a, a remote road versus more of an in-person. And when we were talking about the assessment and that we had to, we really did at that point, maybe kind of had to wait and kind of wait a couple of weeks, but I really want to think about other opportunities, you know. Is the, is it possible to offer to our families, dependent upon how many maybe that want to go back in person? Is it an option to offer them a four-day? We have a four-day virtual Viking. And I've heard, so I, when I say I have a mixed bag, I'm so thankful, and I do want to thank the people that do feel confident and comfortable enough to reach out to me, to share, you know, how they feel. Because I've, I've gotten feedback that varies, right? We, you know, we want to be virtual, like, we just want to not be in the, the movement. We just want to be home. Then I hear people say, you know, and I'm going to be, you know, completely honest. And, you know, I pay taxes, you know, I pay taxes, and I'm not getting the type of education that I guess they're thinking that they should be getting for their children. Others, comparison to other districts, of course. And of course, we always want to be safe, you know, for our teachers and for our children too. So the concern that I have for going full in person, maybe quickly, would be, is if we do. the concern that I have for going full in person, maybe quickly, would be is if we do have a moment where we have to go remotely, it's going to be a bigger and longer issue, I guess. So I just, I want to have more conversation about it. I feel like we're not having enough and and looking outside of the box of different ideas that maybe we can try to intertwine students more in person. I think that's all. Sorry.
That's good. Bill, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was, actually, I was happy to get all of those public comments today because to tonight's meeting, advocating for going back full in. I think there was a lot of well written pieces there with a lot of data to back it up. For those who don't know, I teach in Old Lime and we've been full in since the start of the school year. I'm a little confused by a little bit of the comments about the the differences if we shut down regarding the hybrid model versus full in, we just shut down the high school for a while, both groups, is that correct? And so in and we know from the data that, you know, most of the cases are happening outside of school. So I think if we were we're probably going to see another shutdown, but it's going to impact everybody. It's probably going to happen from a sporting event or, you know, a carpool or a social gathering like like we've seen in the past. So protecting our students, I think that the risk is relatively low. Kids have been doing a great job of wearing masks. I know that it's sometimes difficult to keep the social distancing and I know that it that the class sizes are big and it's you're not going there, but I do think it's relatively safe. The teachers are being exposed to both groups anyway, so I don't see an increased risk there. Granted, the density is going to be more, but we're we're operating the assumption that all of the students in A and B right now don't have COVID, and that's why we're letting them in school. So we're kind of operating on the assumption that everybody doesn't have it. But we're protecting ourselves with masks just in case. So again, I I appreciate the 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 public comments that were written and I understand that there is of risk, but, you know, a lot of what we do has element of risk. We put our kids on a bus to go to a sporting event. There's a risk involved, right? So I I'm just for all in and and that's my opinion.
Good, excellent. I see Barry, you got your hand up?
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. And thanks for all your comments and thanks for all members of the community that wrote in with their very articulate perspectives. As I think about this situation, I'm continually thinking down the road. There's like, where were we right now? But where do we have to be? And we have to be in a position to be prepared when we're going to have to possibly shut down because of the rise of the pandemic. And we have to be thinking about what is that situation going to be looking like so we're not reacting to it, but we're fully prepared for it. As I listen to parents that that have been speaking to me often. And I looked at the in, it's pretty between their comments, between looking at the survey that came back in the middle school, we're about it was like sixty percent or so of the parents were either disagreed or disagreed strongly that the hybrid model is working. And then looking, listening to all the comments that came in the public session today, which were there are a lot of different things, but I think the universal theme to all of them were that they didn't think the hybrid model is working. We can't think of a future where we're going to be using the hybrid model. That's just not working. So the two options and as Candace was saying is that we had to think of like, all right, we have in person and we kind of know how to do that because they've, you know, we've done that before in terms of instructional thing. But the problem we're having with the online issue is that, as I see it, we're we're replicating a mistake that's been made across the spectrum with not only East Line but other schools, where's the attempt to take and replicate, take a classroom instructional, direct instructional model and replicate it on the on the internet. There's no evidence that that works. It just flat out does not work. But on the other hand, there are so many options, there are so many possibilities that are available through web based learning that are well beyond the direct instruction classroom model. That if we started working on it, and I'm always thinking about how we're going to be the best district in the state. Nobody has cracked this yet. Nobody's gotten to it yet. If we could really think creatively, we could change our whole instructional model and take full advantage of all the resources that are available on the web. Leave the kind of replication of the classroom model on the web behind and really think creatively and think forward to how we could make that happen so that when we do have to shut down, we are in a position where we can basically integrate and and use the full potential of the web to provide the very, very best education for our kids. And I I think that's where we have to think.
Okay, good, very good. Other comments, let's see. Oh, well, Jamie?
All right. So I'm in the same boat as everybody. I have everyone giving me comments. I have three kids. So and I'm, I've always said that there is no one size fits all approach. Everyone learns differently. Everyone teaches differently. We're all different. And I have to say, there's nothing more honest and true than having online learning in my house. My children all learn differently. They're at different levels. My youngest, my six year old loves it. She's thriving. Mom is super overwhelmed because I have to help her do everything when I get home from work because my husband works from home and he can't help her. I get the frantic texts all day. We're having Zoom issues. How do I log into Seesaw? And I can't help because I'm at work. My fourteen year old freshman miserable. She is failing miserably. She hates it. She wants to drop out of school. She can't figure out her Zoom. She had no Zoom passwords for today. She called me frantically from her father's for help because she couldn't find any Zoom links for today. Then tomorrow she has all of them already posted. My son, all of his Zoom links are posted for the week already. Every one of the teachers is doing something different. Every one of the students is doing something different. There's no synchronization across the board. It's it's a cluster and I understand that everyone is working hard. Parents are working hard, teachers are working hard, students are working hard. It's stressful for everybody, not just the staff, but for the parents and for the kids and everybody's overwhelmed. If I could have a perfect world, we would be back at school full time. If parents could pick and choose, that would be great because I'd send my fourteen year old to school every day because she needs it. She needs in person teaching. My other two kids are doing fine with the Zoom and the hybrid and but because she doesn't have the five oh four or the IP, she's hybrid. But not every kid needs a five oh four or an IP to have in person instruction. It's just super overwhelming to everybody. I I understand and I would love to have a magic ball that told me the answers. But I think that can't, going back to Candace's, the parents weren't surveyed. We weren't asked if we wanted to go to this new Zoom schedule all day or to do this. The kids weren't asked because I think we would have gotten a lot of answers and a lot of feedback if we were asked them. It's just, it's a horrible situation. I get it. But it's tough. As a parent who has to work, who has to leave my home every day, to leave my kids at home and to have them text me all day long, helping them, and I can't because I have a job, I have to go, which a lot of parents have to do. You feel like you're incompetent as a parent. You feel like you're failing your children. And it's tough. It's tough for me to sit here and put on my Board of Ed hat and throw out my parent hat to be a Board of Ed member, right? But as a, I think I have this voice so you can hear what I have to say because I see it every day. I see it from their friends. I hear it from other parents. We're all struggling and it, something has to happen. And I don't think it's five days of hybrid. I I don't think it's Zoom all day because like I figured out today, they're not all zooming all day. My freshman had to find a Zoom link for a Wednesday to try to see if she could use it today. It's just hard and I think we need to get the kids input and we need to get more parent input and not just the teacher input. Because it's going to keep failing if that's what we're going to go with.
Okay, good. Thanks, Jamie. Anybody else? Kate or Lee? Jill?
I'm happy to talk. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I'm late to the meeting. I got caught up. But communication, I think we said full from the very beginning was going to be the most important determinator for how successful we were going to be with this whole program. And I really feel like we need to up that. And I heard that from basically all the administrators in one way or another. And I know my work as a speech pathologist previously, one school district I was in, we tried to communicate with a parent, somebody on the team every day. And I think that really needs to, we need to kind of up that as far as our game. And I think that could touch on the socially emotional, the academic, but all the components of the program and the kids and the learning. And I think that it needs to be everybody doing it. I think it needs to be the teachers, the parents, the administrators, the counselors, the related staff. I think everybody needs to start cataloging how much who they're connecting with, what the connection is, whether it's face to face, whether it's a phone call, whether it's a a chat, but some kind of communication because and Candace has said it, Jamie has said it, Barry has said it. So I'm just reiterating, but just underscoring, I think the importance of the communication piece, it's not, we're not going to get through this without good communication. And I feel, I feel, I guess, a little bit from what Candace kind of alluded to, too. I really feel like we said this in August, we said this in September, you know, we we started the school year with a lot of trepidation and I feel like we're not going to get through it until the communication piece and some clear identified. And like what Jamie said, it can't be a one size fits all. Like I think some of our parents really like, I'm a strong proponent, you know, of parent training. Some of our parents are going to need help and I've been in districts and I've been in situations where I did home visits. So if parents need help getting their kids set up with whatever, we need to do that. We, and what Barry said, we need to think outside of the box. We can't keep doing what we've been doing because this is how education has been for the last two hundred years. We have to think about how we can do it in this new hybrid or remote learning style model. Like it's a different world. It's a different time. And I know it's tough. I know it's hard, but COVID is hard for everybody, you know, it's it's but we still, we still want our kids to thrive and we still want a huge amount of success. And I know that we all have the creative talents and abilities to do it. I just think we need to use the resources that are available. I talked to a lot of parents who are concerned and also a lot of people who are retired, who would be willing to help and to volunteer. So there are resources available, but I don't really think that me personally, as a board member, that I've been even given the opportunity to like step up and provide what I could provide for for parents and families and what other people who I know who are retired teachers to provide for what we could provide for and and Barry as a professional college educator in the Department of Education. There's a lot we could do and I call it low hanging fruit and we could all help out, but we're not being given that opportunity. So communication.
Okay, good, Kate. Thanks, Lee. You give Lee the floor and then Jack, Bill, Bill raised his hand.
So I would underscore the piece around surveys. I think that was definitely a missed up and I think we need to get that right moving forward. I don't think there's one perfect answer here. I like deeply appreciated reading through all the public comment before this meeting. A lot of it resonated with me personally as a parent. I think where I stand right now is like, I deeply believe that virtual Viking needs to remain an option for families, like that has to stay on the table. And I am probably feeling more aligned with what Bill was sharing earlier about like, we need to start seriously talking about what it would look like to move away from the hybrid plan and what the timeline and what it would actually look like to to resume more in person instruction. And if it's not five days a week, maybe it is a Plan C where it is four days a week. And then one day to do virtual to really hone in on what Barry was sharing around like, yeah, we need to prepare for this. And we need to think about what it would look like to do virtual instruction excellently. And that shouldn't be something that we stop focusing on, but something needs to change from what we are currently doing. I don't know the right answer and I'm trying to think more with my Board of Ed cap and not my parent hat. Because as a parent, I honestly don't think I can do hybrid that much longer. So yeah, just deeply appreciate all the all the public comment, but I would like to see us have a more the granular discussion on what resuming in person for five days a week could look like.
Let me just reiterate too, because there were some comments about, you know, possibly going remote again. That that's kind of the furthest from my mind, you know, to to have to do a two week closure again. Or, you know, go remote altogether. You got right now New London, Groton, Waterford, all sitting on that red zone. And, you know, they're, they're talking about going fully remote for a period of time, but it's it's not happening right now. And and I think, again, those were the mitigation measures come into play. We were red, you know, the last, you know, two weeks or so. Now we're down to orange. We did not go remote. We did not, you know, that that is not the intention. You're right. We we need to start going the other way. Leaf and kind of what you were, you were talking about and and others as well. It's just how do we safely and effectively, you know, do that? We we get it. We we hear, you know, some things need to change and that's what we're working towards. Good. Bill, did you want to say something more?
No, I I just think that, you know, with the option of the virtual Viking, which I can't, I agree, we can't take that off the table. There's just some folks that are not, you know, comfortable yet to to go full in. I I agree with what Barry's saying, but we we, you know, obviously, everybody got a lot thrown at them. I'm impressed with how quickly the whole staff and everybody adapted, you know. Everybody's now zooming. Everybody's got their new laptops. They've got cameras they're trying to figure out and document cameras and they're and each day there's a new new technology challenge that they're they're trying to take on and some teachers obviously are, you know, you know, moving a little bit faster than others at mastering that. But I really think that getting back to to full in is the way to go. And I I I suspect that we will have to call on those those other skills for one, to keep our virtual Vikings engaged. And for two, the next time, you know, we have to shut down for a few days. So I I I think that it's really the right way to move.
Yeah, just to be quick, there's no plans to, no plans to eliminate, you know, the virtual Viking program. That's it. Still, the the state came out with that as a temporary plan and program. We've heard nothing from the state about, you know, changing that or doing away with it. So we have no plans on on removing that. Eric, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. I have I guess two questions, or one comment, one question. So my comment, I guess where I lean towards has been hybrid because I'd rather the students be in school two days a week than zero. And my fear of the five days a week is then if if things go the wrong way, we could be full distance. So that's my, you know, conservative nature, like, let me. So that's my, you know, conservative nature, like let me get two days versus the five. But after hearing everybody. You know, part of me said, well, is it worth taking a chance? Like if we don't try it. Then we don't know. And if it works, that would be fantastic, right? That's the best outcome. That's what we'd like. Five days a week. Or four and one, that actually sounded kind of interesting. Hadn't thought about that one. That could be an interesting one as well. So there, there's something to that. So that's my, my comment. My question is, is, is this something from a process, you know, there was a lot of. Information from the Board of Ed, like what's, is this something we're going to decide or we're giving feedback to Jeff and his team or? How does this proceed?
Well, I just think the commissioner has said it a number of times and has been pretty clear that he wants superintendent send the Department of Public Health. You know, making those decisions. He's not said about the board, but obviously everybody's input is, is important in all of this, you know, and it's just such varied. Discrepancies in how people feel, but I think collectively, you know, what, what, what's the best answer? That's what we need to, to keep working, working towards.
I think you heard from mostly, from most of the Board of Ed, I think I may have been the one who was probably least in favor of. Um, but maybe convinced to, to doing it. So I worry about surveys. I'm, I'm okay with surveys, but. Depends on who, who responds and you get a lot of mixed data and what are you gonna do with it? So it's, it's good to do that. I just don't know that that's the answer. I don't know that that's soft, that helps. It's information, so I don't want to not do it. But I don't think that's gonna give us answers and I don't can't, I'd love to hear what Candace has to say. So I'll pass it to her, but. I, I do think you heard a lot of favorability fa- in favor of going towards a. More in person. That's what I heard.
Candace?
Yeah, no, as far as the survey, I mean, I've never been data driven and I've said that since I came onto the board, but. Having that survey does give you an indication on where our people are at. It can give us some, some guidance. It, it does. I do think that it's helpful and most of all, I think that especially right now. You know, people want to be heard. They want to share. They want to be having input, you know. Um, I think it was in the summertime, I even said, you know, you can't, you can't expect people in general to. Support you if you don't allow them time at the table. And at this point, we don't even have time at the table. We've had Zoom. I mean, and you know, we have to give people that opportunity. And I do think that it's a good reference. I don't think that it's a decision maker. I think that it's a good reference. I think that. If we were to really, and, and I understand what the commissioner said and I understand that it does come down to the superintendent. Um, and I understand that I don't have a vote really on it, but I do have input and so does everyone else. And I think that that is a really. Great thing to share because again, in the end, you want support. You want people to be behind. Your movement or your change or whatever it is you're looking to do. So. With any type of, of possible change, try to think about, well, okay, if we're not gonna go all in person. Say we were to hypothetically give the option Monday, Tuesday. Thursday, Friday, in person, you are eliminating cohort A, cohort B. Organizing organizational mess for teachers and you're keeping it simple. To in person or virtual Viking because that's an option for people that don't want to participate in any type of in person. And then you're leaving that Wednesday for all in person students to be online. And it gives the opportunity for our schools to have that day to have a deep cleaning or what have, whatever they need in the teachers. So I just think that there are, there are ways, there are options and. At this point, I think that it's worth having the conversation and taking a little bit of a risk.
Okay, good, excellent. Let's see. Jill, did you have anything you wanted to share? Nope.
No, not at this point.
Okay, thank, thanks. Barry, you got something else?
Very quick comment. I think another way to read all the feedback we received. Is the variable is teacher contact. That the reason that the hybrid model is so disparaged is the fact that kids are only getting two days a week of teacher contact. The positive stuff that's coming back from a high school is that the kids have moved into a setting where even if they're not in class, at least. Through uh, technology, they're getting teacher contact. So I think that has to be the major variable we have in front of us is to, what is the best way? To enhance and maximize teacher contact with the students, you know, if for. Safety reasons, we have to stay with separating kids into cohorts. We could do the first two days using. And when I use the term Zoom. Not saying that it's five hours sitting in front, looking in the classroom. There are so many creative ways. That technology can be used for students to have teacher contact, but not necessarily have to sit there listening to a talking head. Um, and I think so if we creatively use those two days with, you know, with the web and provide. Teacher contact, not in the form of a talking head, but. Somebody that says here's some, here's a project that you're working on, you know, start working on with some other people and. You know, I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna be checking back with you, but I'm, I'm partnering with you in this thing. That is a possibility. So I, I, I think that we, there are so many options we can do, but I think the major variable we have to keep in front of us is. How to maximize teacher contact with the students.
Good, very well said, very well said. Kate, you got something else?
Well, I think that we're not. Getting enough of an idea for what. The response is, if we have 482 parent responses at the middle school and 541 student responses. And then what is the response rate at the other levels? I'm not clear on that. And I don't think that's necessarily indicative of. Of what we need to do. I think we need, like I said, better communication and a better understanding and idea for what. More people are thinking and saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So.
So how could we go?
What I'm hearing. Is um, there you have to have surveys done now. Certainly at the elementary level. And I think the way the survey should be constructed is it should be much more to the point where you're saying. If we go to a full day, if we go back to a full, full day school classes. Would you, would your student, would you, would you opt your student to go into, into that versus into the virtual Viking? So, so we know exactly, exactly where the, the, the parents are sitting. With respect to those two options. I think that that would, and I think that that's the type of information that you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, need. In order to make a, you know, to make, to make a call. I, I think that there's, there's urgency in, in, in getting that information coming in. In parallel with doing what you're, what you're planning, which is the, for the discussions with the faculty. And the continued. Everybody, my two cents is I, I, I have in my head, I am carrying around deep, deep concerns for the elementary kids. I that not having the, the, the contact with the teachers just makes it very difficult for them to, to. Do what's necessary for them to do. And those, the, those grades of first, second. Grade are just absolutely critical in setting the whole stage for where the. I would tend to, tend to, my vote would tend to be with where Bill was and say we should, at the elementary level, I think we should be. Moving, moving forward. That's kind of, at, at least that's what I, I'm, I'm hearing. So and, and I'm, and I'm definitely. Think that's where we're, where we're at. It is fully understandable though, as to if, I think that Candace's point about. We're, we're late on the surveys. I totally agree with that. But I, where we're at right now, it's hard because. As we were in the red. The number of cases, Waterford is, is it the shutdown, Montville completely shut down. Has gone remote. So, but you know, it's, it's understandable, but I think that again, I think that we should get ready to. To see exactly. Where everybody is with respect to going on back to a, a full. Full reopening, so. That's kind of my, my two cents. I'm excellent. So I'm sure Jeff, you're gonna have, you've got, you and your administrative team have got lots of things to, to discuss here.
Yeah, Tim, can I, if I can just add to, I, I wanna, you know, I wanna thank, you know, parents, you know, for. More diligence, you know, across the community as it pertains to, you know, mask wearing, but there's still elements of, you know, I've gotten various reports. You know, sometimes parents stand at the bus stop, you know, not wearing their masks, their kids are there. You know, we really all gotta continue to work hard outside of the school community. You know, to, to make sure that, you know, we're doing our part. So we don't have those transmissions, you know, continue to, to rise. They're on the down slope now. That's a good thing. We're going into the holidays. It's a tough time of year, obviously Thanksgiving, Christmas, people get together. So hopefully that will, that will continue.
Tim, can I just ask a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
My, my question is on. A COVID cases, Jeff. So my understanding, and I need you to correct me if I'm wrong, because I think people need to have an understanding of. Of kind of how this works. So my understanding is that say someone. Under the age of seventeen and they are a student here and they get tested anywhere, wherever they're tested. Doesn't matter if it's in town or not. They get tested and it comes back positive. That goes back to my belief is led light and then. Our district is contacted regardless. It doesn't, it doesn't mean whether or not. When we're contacted, it doesn't mean that the student. Had a transmission at the school. It just means that they have. Tested positive and then from there, that's when Ledlight does their contact tracing. Is that how it works or how?
Exactly, Candace. It goes both ways with sometimes we are notified and we're letting Ledlight know. That we got, we caught wind, a, a parent called us or a staff member told us that they tested positive. We call and, and Ledlight, we send a form. A completed form over to Ledlight. Uh, we also go into the Department of Health. Um, there's a system that they have generated where we put in every single transmission. And uh, you know, that's how it's the process, the process goes. And then we notify, you know, the community of the, of the case.
Okay, so when you notify the community of the case, it doesn't necessarily mean that the case transpired in the school. It's just that person is under the age and is technically within district and or it, it could be. A staff too, it could be, right, any individual. That's what I should, any individual. All right. I just wanted to double check. That's what my, that's what my understanding was, but I do hear sometimes people don't really kind of understand that. So I wanted to, to make sure that way I can tell people.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Jeff, anything else on this one?
No, we're, we're gonna dive into the middle school results. I know the discussions will start tomorrow. Uh, we'll continue, you know, the discussions based off of feedback tonight. Thank you with, you know, the administrators and, and begin with staff and we'll go from there. We will keep you, we'll keep you posted.
Okay, okay, good. Let's move on then. To the next item up is an update on the COVID district expenses section. Say a few words of that or turn it over to Mariana.
Yeah, we just, Mariana can speak to too. I mean, we just attached it. We've got a, you know, a date we're putting up, it's just a running date up in the, up in the corner now. There's been no changes since, you know, our last meeting. Marian and I met with the first selectman and the finance director today. Basically said the same thing. There's no changes. You know, we did strategize and talked about, you know, different ways that maybe we, you know, come up with money at the end of the year if we still are facing, you know, that. That deficit. Obviously, we'll know much more, you know, in, in January and, you know, those discussions will continue. Mariana, anything to add regarding the document at all?
No, not the document, just to let you know that, um, we had the second submission for the CRF grant because they revised. And allowed us to revise our allocations. So I could put that in today. Jeff submitted it. So we're waiting to hear on whether or not that's approved.
Good. Any questions? Eric?
Yeah, just real quick. So, you know, it's about a million dollars, right? So after net, after grants, so. And I know you've been talking with the Board of Finance, but when do? I guess what I'm struggling with is that's a big dollar amount that we're probably just, it's unlikely we just find or it's. Fairly unlikely that we just find and are normal. Hey, if we save a little here, save a little there, what can we do? So. What's the process that if we need relief that, that happens? Do we, we have to go to the Board of Finance and? And ask, is that what we will do and when would we go and do that?
Yeah, we would need to, to do or go and request a special appropriation, you know, with them. Our timeframe was, you know, seriously looking at that come January. You know, and prior to the budget season, because that's gonna, you know, involve everybody quite busily. The other piece though, to remember, we, we were hoping that the town might take that money that we returned to them at the end of last year. As well as, you know, we're still in that tight budget freeze and the savings will hopefully accrue. And that's the purpose of having that, that freeze from the start of this year. You know, to help offset these, these costs. So I don't exactly what that's gonna amount to, but hopefully it will get us close to maybe that million dollars.
Yeah, I was hoping after December, when we have a half a year in, I'm gonna work on, then we'll have some solid. Be able to solidly project some of the numbers and we'll probably have a better handle on whether or not, you know, where we are with. Hybrid or, you know, fully in school and then we can have a better idea and see if we'll have some savings that we can apply toward the deficit.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Barry?
Mariana, just one question on the nature of the licenses we have with Zoom. If teachers started using Google Meet and stopped using Zoom, would we be able to save money on those Zoom licenses?
So I'll have Amy answer, but I believe there for a year, Amy, but I'm not positive off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's an annual license that we pay for.
Then by, again, as I've said before, my concern is that. If we could start working now to transition out of that using Google Meet next year, when our budget comes around, we won't have to spend $28,000 on Zoom.
Okay, good. Okay, and everybody else, all set with that? It looks like it. Okay, so we'll move on. Our next one, next thing is the, oh, it's the discussion for discussion and then it's, it's. The beginning, the planning for the twenty one, twenty two. Budget and budget workshops and Jeff and I have had some conversations about this. Jeff, you wanna? Say a few words there?
Yeah, we typically, you know, we, we have the, the November workshop. Last year was November eighteenth and then December sixteenth. We met, we had the two, two workshops. You know, with all that's going on, you know, Tim and I, and, and probably, you know, we've, we've talked with administration, you know, we're, we're not expecting, you know. To have lengthy discussions about increases of staff here, increases of staff there, math coaches. You know, we, we're, that's not the direction we were planning for, for next year at this point. So we thought maybe. Using some of our board meeting time for November discussions, initial discussions, and then have a workshop in December. Because we're also trying to do that equity, the equity components and have some workshops there too. So we don't want to overwhelm people. So Tim and I were thinking, you know, maybe we. We'd use some board meeting time for some budget discussions in November and then have a workshop, you know, in, in the middle of December. Was our plan of attack. So I don't know if anybody, any thoughts on that?
And one quick question as we get preparing for the budget things. School improvement plans. What are the plans for getting those out so we can review those? Because the school improvement plan should be part of our budget discussion.
Yeah, there, we, we haven't, haven't even gotten as far to, you know, right now, we're still finalizing, you know, how goals are, are going to roll out for, for all staff. We have not gotten. That far with even. We have not gotten that far with even having discussions that about the improvement plans. So we can, we can talk openly. I, I don't, you know, there, there's two, two focus areas. It's, you know, the, the reopening process and the movement in that and fluidity. And then it's obviously the equity and inclusion. So, you know, how that rolls in. And I don't know, maybe we have some, some modified or temporary, you know, improvement plans for this year. Those are, those two items are the goals that we've given for the directives to the administrators as well. So.
If on the last year we did the budget, we ran into that question of what is because? What are we trying to achieve in the schools with, with this budget things? And that was, that was on the table, but it was kind of, we're going to work on that. And that was going to be an item we're going to be able to discuss in this, in the next budget round.
So you're talking about next year's improvement plans.
I'm talking about, uh, the ones that are going to inform our discussions around the budget. So that I think last year you came out like in last September or so, or October, you came out with school improvement plans and
Yep.
Those are just like what I'm thinking about because we need to know kind of like where this, you know, what is the, the, the plan for this and how it's going to inform the budget. You know, and what is our because? How are we going to answer the the question that was brought up last year for our budget? You know, what is the return on the investment that the town is making in us?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could tie in some discussions at that, you know, through the November work around that. As you look at, you know, next year. Again, for, for this year, it's, it's going to be those two focus areas as, you know, we've, we've identified and solidified on. But as we think about twenty one, twenty two, maybe there's where some of the, those discussions can come in, Barry, you know, in, in November. Okay, I don't know if others have thoughts around that or, you know. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my, 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 my position is, is, we should be doing everything we can to try to get what's happening today and tomorrow and then the next week in our schools against the, the issues of, of, of trying to, trying to do the very best for our students and and figure out the, the best way of handling that. Quite frankly, we don't know what's going to, what, what things are going to look like here in the next three or four, four months. And it's very hard, or even the next year, we don't know if a vaccine is actually going to to come in, to play. So I, you know, it's just, it's just so hard to, 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 you know, see, see much, much further than, than the next horizon, which is probably within a week. So Eric, you got your hand up.
Yeah, just.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, there was a lot of feedback.
Just as terms of areas to look for as we go into twenty twenty one budget, and I think, Tim, you were talking about already, and I agree, math coaches. I, I don't know right now. I can't think about those. But the one area that I can think about is we had some, I can't remember if it was psychology, school psychologists or in behavior. So if you think about what we're, where we are and what we may be heading into, even if it's on a temporary basis, I'd be interested in what resources we need as we think about, obviously we're getting through this year, but even as you start to look at September twenty one, we will, it's not all going to be resolved and, and we might need more help. And it might be temporary that we don't, we're not looking to hire a bunch, but it might be that we need some help for a year or so. So anyway, I'd like just some thoughts around what that could look like. If you think it's, if you think we might need it, what that might look like and, and we might want for a year, something like that. So that would be something I'd be interested in hearing more about.
Very good. Jamie, you got your hand up?
I wanted to say thanks to Eric for beating on my drum. It's the one thing that I ask for every single year is more psychologists, social workers in our schools. And not just the high school, but the middle school, the elementary school. All right, the kids' mental health gets cut every single year. And this year more than ever, they are going to need it. The staff's going to need it. They're all going to need it. I, I just, they do, they get cut every year. I ask for them every year. And they do, they get cut. And this year we can't mess around with the kids' mental health.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Okay, so we'll move on to our next one, which is for discussion, and that's the Board Equity and Inclusion follow-up to what we've been working on. Jeff, you want to?
Yeah, Tim and I have had some, you know, some, some good discussions. We, we sent out the, to everybody, the synthesis underneath, you know, the responses that we had received from board members as it pertains to those, those two questions. I've sent those and that information over to Joel. You know, we had, we have a, a date set of the fifth of November to meet with her. You know, Barry shared some good information. There's some other and folks out there as well. That, you know, he had passed along. And Barry, you can speak, I'll let you talk to that if you want to share that information out. But you know, my thought and Tim and I, you know, had, had talked about this together that maybe, you know, we, we move forward with Joel for this piece. But then maybe we figure out, you know, what are next steps? And maybe it includes looking at a different person or a different avenue based off of what they might be able to, to offer. Since we already had Joel on, on the books, but happy to entertain, you know, additional thoughts. This is, you know, the Board of Ed's training and ongoing work. So I want to make sure all board members, you know, have a part in that, in that say, obviously. It's just a question of, you know, what, what I want to know from Joel, and I poised it to her after looking at the synthesis, you know, that was created. What could you do for us? Where can you take this, you know, for us? Because we, we don't want to keep spinning our wheels, that's for sure. So what, what are we going to get out of that? That synthesis. And that's something, you know, we can talk a little bit more now about now, what, you know, was, was created. Or we can wait and have that workshop and see where it takes us.
Let's see. Jamie, you got your hand up?
Well, my first question is, did the, are there any other answers to these questions? Because only five of us answered them. So my concern is that half of us didn't answer these questions.
I, I know, I don't, I, I, we received five and had put it out a couple of times. That was all that we, that was all that we got.
So that is my biggest concern before we ever get to November fifth, is that only half of us replied to these answered questions. And I, I think that's a really big issue in and of itself. That, that's very telling. And I'm a little, I'm very sad that that is the result on the Board of Ed's side. And that's all I have to say about that.
Oh, I can, I can't agree more. Yeah. I mean, we really, it would work best and we would be able to move forward with everybody's input. And I, and I know that it, you know, maybe I, I knew going in that at some point, we, we were going to see people either feel uncomfortable with, you know, participating or having good, honest feedback. But that's part of this process. So I'm hopeful. I'd like you to put it out again. You know, people don't have to put their names on their responses, that you don't have to do that. It's just the participation level. And we are, we made up of ten people, so.
Lee, you had your hand up?
It was just to underscore what Jamie and Candace had already said. That was the number one thing that I took away from seeing responses. Aside from some really great ideas and thoughts in there, just that participation was really just.
Yeah. Does anybody have any specific feedback on what Jeff and I put together in terms of at least synthesizing the input that we did receive? And how we, while we put it together. I mean, I, yeah, just, I was just curious if, you know, are we kind of going in the right direction? Is it, is it the mark? Is it, you know? I, I, I actually thought it was, there was a lot of, in, in the input that we got, I thought there was a fair amount of consistency with, with the direction. Jamie?
I think that's the problem is you really don't have, you only have fifty percent of the data, right? We always talk about the data. Well, we only have half. So how, how do we really know what the board is feeling if you've only heard from half of the members of the board? So I, I think that we don't have the complete data, right? Because it's not all here. It's not complete. If only fifty percent of the population filled out the information, we have no idea what the other five members of the board are better thinking. So I really, I honestly, I don't think we have anything to talk to Joel about until we hear from the other five members of the board.
Yeah, okay. Good. Eric, you got your hand up?
We put Jill has been trying to get in and maybe you can't see her because she's lower in the thing. So I, I, let me let Jill get in first and then, then I do have a comment.
Thank you, Eric. First of all, I think most, both, most of you know that I feel very comfortable sharing my opinion and speaking my thoughts. But I am one of those persons who did not fill out the survey. And I just choose not to fill it out right now. I have a lot of thoughts, a lot of strong opinions. But I choose not to, I choose not to complete the survey. So I don't want, I think you have enough good information. I've read it two or three times. I think you have some good opinions. But at this point, and I don't know how the other four people feel, I choose not to respond to that survey. And you've, if you, and I guess is I don't want to be forced to complete it because people are feeling they're not, there's not enough information. But I think you all know I would express my opinion if I had it, especially being anonymous. But I'm admitting here, I choose not to do it at this point. So you can criticize me or think that I'm not participating in a board member, but this is the only time I've not completed a survey.
Okay, okay. Well, maybe, you know, maybe this is, there, maybe this is substrate again for Joel, for us as, as a board to actually have some pretty hard conversations. Because when we, when we sit back and then we say that this is something that's important and all ten of us came together and, and said this was important. A, a full consensus on this. So that may be, that may be something where we just need to have some more harder conversations as, as, as a full board on this, on this topic. So. Jeff?
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with that, Tim. Would, I think we're, we're kind of stuck here. And if we don't have those tougher conversations, we're not going to open up that door any further, it seems. Eric and Kate and have, have their hands up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Kate, go ahead.
Hi, was it just the two questions?
Yes.
Okay, so I apologize. I guess, you know, I, I felt like we already talked about all of this. We've talked about this passionately in different conversations that we had. I feel like I've already said that I think that there's problems and that there's issues. I mean, I feel like we're being so redundant and perseverating on it. So I guess I surprised that you want more clarity. And as far as like the short term and the long term achievement and how we would accomplish better equity, I feel like we've talked about that. And I think it's a process by which you roll out. And I think we've talked about this before too. I think it's a process by which you roll out simple things, you know, it could start by one book, reading one book across all of our district and having conversations about that. We've talked about having anti-bias training and, and implicit bias awareness. We've talked about prejudice. So I don't know like what the steps would be. And there's already been some steps outlined. I've already identified places where we could go for training that wouldn't cost us a nickel with different like the Smithsonian Institute, the cultural awareness that they have down there and the programs that they offer. And I've taken some of those classes and before I moved here, when I moved here from the Heartland twenty five years ago, probably even thirty years ago, we were doing bias training and awareness training and in the schools where I was working back then. So I kind of feel like this is so redundant. And I feel like we just need to get started and there isn't really anything that's, that's not really obvious. We just need to get going on it. And it's just like, there's no reason to hold, to hold back. We just need to start. And we've already had some really good conversations. When Joel came, we had some really good conversation. I think she was really impressed by us as a board that we were as open as we are, that we were willing, ready and able. And I think at that evening, we were all ready to sit down and make some action plans when it was all ripe and prime in our frontal lobe, ready to talk about it. And we just, we just shut, we shut down and we walked away. Which is, which is fine because we were tired and it was over scheduled and it was an awkward meeting where some of us were zooming and we couldn't hear the discussion or see the PowerPoint or the, the print. You know, I understand. And I'm, I'm patient, so I understand that. But by the same token too, I don't think that any of us should feel admonished by not responding to something when I feel like I have not sat back on a single time and said, this is important. This is something we should do. I have had friends who are people of color who've been stopped on their way home from the pizza place by police officers who've said to them, what are you doing? Why are you driving? Where are you going? And he's like, I'm taking dinner to my family. And just the different discussions that need to go on in some homes that I have not had to go, I've not had to have with my children. So I, I really feel like we shouldn't be shaming each other for, for making these public comments. I feel like we've all been working together. And because we didn't fill out a survey, perhaps we feel like it's reiterating something that's already been said. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Um, I don't know, Eric or Candace, uh, which one, put their hand up first.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I think that got incredibly defensive over absolutely nothing. And I'm not too sure why it took that tone. And I'm not too sure if anybody else felt like it was a little bit defensive, but I definitely do. We were asked to fill out the survey. When you get fifty percent back, you really should have all. Nobody's trying to shame anybody. If anybody didn't want to be known that they didn't do or fill it out, then you didn't have to say anything. It's, it's part of a whole, I guess, commitment that we've all made. Kate Steele, I have no idea where you came from with people shutting down after the meeting and having to leave. I'm clueless on that. We ended the meeting because it ended. And Joel, I think, had to leave and there was only one person that zoomed in. So that, none of that needed to get defensive. I think that we are all trying to make an incredible effort here. But the bottom line is, is that clearly some people are very uncomfortable. I think that people are uncomfortable. And I think that that's what is clearly being shown. And that's all I have to say. I look forward to seeing Joel again. And maybe she can help some of you.
Are all of us, all of us as a team. Eric?
Yeah, so I will, yeah, I kind of feel the same way as, as Candace. I mean, I mean, from a process perspective, we had this discussion at the last meeting that we only had five and ten and we talked about the importance that there's this is, we picked two things to really focus on this year, and this was one of the two. I'm okay, I'm perfectly okay if someone doesn't want to fill it out. It's, it, it is maybe, if, if you think it's redundant, if you just think you have your feelings that you don't want to, whatever it is, I'm perfectly okay. But there should be, and maybe there was, there should be a response to say, I'm not comfortable doing that. That's a response that actually. So five and ten for me said, we only had five people who, who even acknowledged it. And we asked that two weeks ago at our board meeting and said, hey, we really, we only had five and ten. It'd be really good to get everybody's thoughts. I'm perfectly okay. I am hundred percent okay if people don't want to, didn't want to do it. But there's a process piece of it. But there's a process piece of it, if you don't do something, it feels like you don't care. And I'm not saying you don't care and don't jump all over me to say that. That's the perception. If you don't at least acknowledge, say, I'm not comfortable with that. So, so that's my feeling on that. To move forward, I somewhat agree. I'd like to move forward. I mean, I, again, I looked at my November 5th. I don't have that blocked off, so I got to make sure that we really have that. But the other thing is, you know, I think there are some, there were some really good ideas that we came up with. I think there's some things that I'd like to move forward with, and there's some things I'd like to continue to learn. So I'm hoping, I don't know if that's November 5th, but I'm hoping we can start to bring this stuff together and really talk about it as, as a board event.
Okay, Bill, you have your hand up.
I'm not going to be defensive or anything else. I wasn't at the last board meeting. To be quite honest with you, I don't even know if I filled this out much that I, I mean, this is the same information. I am completely on board. If I am one of the five, now we have gotten a few folks that have already spoken, so they think we were. And I apologize if I am one of the five. Like I said, I was somehow, either I thought I filled it out or this slipped through the cracks.
Okay. Jill, get your.
I apologize if I started anything. Maybe what I should have said is, I think everything written is perfectly clear and fine, and it's a great way to proceed. I wasn't being defensive. It's just like, why should I recreate the wheel? And maybe I had a couple of weeks that were really, really busy, but it's.
Jill, you're on mute again. Jill, you're muted.
I, what I said is, and I forgot where I stopped, is basically I was not defensive. I didn't mean to, I shouldn't mean to say or imply that I disagreed. I thought everything written was excellent. So why should I recreate the wheel? I mean, my opinion would just meld into what the rest of them are. I guess is, in response to what Kate said, I'm like, I'm more of an action person. Let's do it. Let's get down to it. We all know that with this is something we're all, we're all feel we need to affect a change. So it's like, I don't know. I just am not defensive and I think we are all, I'm very free with my opinion. So I, I don't want to feel forced to do something that I don't want to do. I think we still live in America, so. Anyway, again, I should have never said anything. I should have never said anything.
No, I don't think that that, I don't think that, that doesn't help either. But I, Jill, I do appreciate the comments of saying that, that what you've read that you see, you know, is, is, you know, you're okay, you know, you're, you know, okay with. And I think that, I think what we have as a board to do is we have to conversations now around which thing are we going to push? Or which things are we going to push and have that, and have that type of a conversation? I would imagine on, on the 5th of November, we will, I hope, we'll be able to, to kind of get into that level of discussion. And then so that action can start to occur. And I think that that's, I mean, I think that's, that's what you want. And as John Kleinhan said, the other, at the last meeting and so forth, you know, we have, we, things are moving. So I think that that's, that's good. Jeff Scott, you have your diversity team meeting coming up, don't you?
Tomorrow. Yep, tomorrow afternoon.
And there, and you're going to be talking about the, the position statement discussion?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's good. And we've, you know, so, so I think things are, are moving, you know, are moving along. And you know, I think that will, you know, keep, keep things pushing along. If every, if everybody, you know, just look at those, it's in board now, the input that we've received. And then this little synthesis that Jeff and I put together. And if you say, hey, it's great, that's, that's fantastic. If you say you want to make some more comments, that's okay too. But a response would, would be good, as Eric was saying. Barry, I see you have your hand up.
Before I had Kate had her hand up, or I don't know if Kate, if you had something more you wanted to say, and I'll defer to you and then I'll come back.
Well, I, I, I do remember that when we, when Joelle did finish, not to argue, but I think Jamie said, are we going to process this now? Are we going to have a wrap up? And I think you, Tim, said, no, let's just call it a night. And we called it a night and Joelle left and her time was up. But I felt like we as a board could have sat for five more minutes, 10 more minutes and have drawn out, like had a little bit more of that. There were some real good, deep conversation that happened at that time. And I felt like we grew closer as a board as a result of people having those kinds of converse, kinds of conversations. And I think that's what has to happen. Just people need to open up and to share. And I don't think that there's any secrets out there. And I don't think that there's anybody on the board that I'm hearing that doesn't want to have this happen. And I feel like the board, the Black Lives Matter has been very helpful and instrumental in articulating and outlining a number of action steps and plans and things that we could do. And I think individually as board members, we've articulated specific things that we could do that have not been done. And I don't think that we've been given opportunities to hear back what's been going on within the district for the different workshops and things that have been occurring. So it's a, it's a process, absolutely, but it has to be a mutual communication back and forth. And perhaps it was this type of survey, the, the two questions that were sent out. And so those are some.
Yeah, those, those two questions were sent out because the board reached consensus of saying, let's just try and capture what we had, had had, but had, had, had reached with the conversation we had with Joelle. And so what we were trying to do is just kind of lay, lay it all out on some paper and say, yeah, this is, oh no, we should do this. You had several ideas, Kate, that I don't think we've, we really have actually captured in, in specific detail in, in that document. So it's really.
Okay.
Just to kind of get the game plan on a hunk of paper. So we all say, yeah, that's case. That's all of us.
Well, I, I think, I think it's bigger than that. I think it's deeper than that. I think if we look at the problems, the problems occur across the domain. I think they occur on the soccer field, on the football field, in the buses, in the cafeteria, you know, so it's, it's bigger than.
I'm not, I'm not, I, I, yeah, sure, right. Just put it, put it, articulate it so we can see it. But I can't, you know, that's, that's what's needed. Barry, you had your hand up.
Okay, yeah, okay. Very quickly, years ago, I was working in model cities. I was, we were working with the Black Panthers, not like Black Lives Matter matters then. And one of the things that I learned, that's where I became acquainted with critical theory. And sitting with the other directors of the model city projects in the north end of Hartford and the south end of Hartford, there were many times when the legislative bodies or the governing bodies or people up in the city hall had meetings and they determined what the problems and issues were of the neighborhoods. And when those were handed down to the neighborhoods, the leaders I was working with would always come back to say, they would basically deprive the fact that a group of all white people could have the the hubris to figure out what their problems were. And they said, you know, we really need to be involved and we need to have someone who's experienced the world as we've experienced it. Do we need the problems that we're facing? So my, the board, the, what I wrote was basically a plea to cut to the chase. And again, in those meetings, the, the commission, the directors I was working with that say is like, you know, they would kind of like, almost like laugh a bit and say like, you know, why do they have to have so many meetings up there to figure out what the issues of race are? And they said, you know, just, why can't we just cut to the chase and get this thing done? So I had the recommendation of, we could get somebody, an educator. And I was able to, in a Zoom meeting I was in the other day with the Providence Schools, there was a very powerful woman, Carla Vigil, who has the, was a co-founder of the Equity Institute. She was a fourth grade teacher and was involved a lot in social justice and social equity issues in the classroom. And they follow an institute on that. And she seemed to be a very insightful, knowledgeable person about the issues that are facing education now. What I mean by cut to the chase is that she could very easily or readily, I think, come up, talk with us and do whatever word you want to say, whether it's a review, audit, take a look at, you know, the issues that are in our system and probably could see issues of curriculum, issues of activities that jump right out for her and come up with recommendations that here's things that we can get right into. If somebody of her stature or her background came up with those recommendations, we would be free of the critique of how did an all-white board come up to be these, the issues that the minorities are facing in our system? So my recommendation would be to, to use the money we have to basically interview or explore with her what she would do and to bring somebody in to just do an outside look at our district and come up with the recommendations. And then with the set of recommendations, we as a board could move right to action on them without, you know, just basically, you know, talking about what has to be done. We could get right into doing what has to be done.
Good, good, good. I actually was pretty impressed with some of the stuff that I've been reading on the critical race theory, which is, which is pretty, pretty interesting. And I, the, the point about having yet another set of eyes look at, look at what's going on within our district from a perspective that we just can't, it's so hard for us to, to do as an all-white board, you know, I, it seems like something that's kind of logical. And I, I think we should have a conversation on November 5th. Okay, all right. Jeff, anything else you want to, you want to say? Oh, I'm sorry. Barry, you want to say something more?
Just one very quick thing. The, the other, Joelle is very good, but I see her as a generalist. I mean, she can just basically deal with the larger issues. But I think we really have to get our discussions focused on what's happening in schools and education. And I'd be much, I'd have greater preference to hire somebody and work with somebody who knew, had the perspective that could bring right into schools and not just kind of a general issue about structural racism.
Okay, yep. Nope, good, good point. Okay, Jeff, anything you want to add?
I'll, Barry, maybe we can talk. I'm happy to reach out to, I think it was Calla, you said her name was, Vigil and, you know, and doesn't hurt to start some, some conversations, you know?
Okay, all right. So we're ready to move on? I hope so. Okay. The next one is the first reading of a revised revision on policy 5132 on dressing and grooming. And that was just because we had a little, some, some little hoops at our last attempt at this one. Amy, you want to say something or?
Want me to say Jamie or?
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's just a cleanup of the one that we did last week because it was all messy and it was not organized very well when we did it last week. Because it was the rate, the, the regulation and the policy on the same sheet. So it got broken up. Now it's just policy on the sheet.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody reviewed it or not to have a first reading, but it's there.
And if anybody has any comments on it. So, okay. All right. Thanks, Amy. Let's see, let's move on to administration reports. Jeff, do you have?
Yeah, just things to share with us? Two quick items. We already talked about the Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting, you know, tomorrow. Looking forward to getting together with that, that group. We are also planning to, you know, we've talked about with the unaffiliated group and, and coming together that the few Board of Ed members that are part of that, that committee. We ran late last year. We are pulling that together for hopefully, you know, late November, early December. So we can come together earlier as, and Jamie, you're part of that group and I think Bill. So we plan on meeting sooner than later. We're already working on that. So, and actually Mariana has already, I think, got most of the numbers, the numbers done as, you know, draft form. So the other piece is CIP. Chris Lund, myself and Mariana will be meeting tomorrow on CIP, getting that rolling. Chris has already done a nice job in putting together, you know, capital items on yet. We will be ready to, to jump in with that and we can share that information out, maybe even at the next board meeting or start at an FFO meeting, which we'll be planning for the near future as well. That was it. Those, those two items.
Okay, all right, good. Amy?
Hi, everyone. So I think right now our focus is on addendum 12 in the State Department and using that with our administration and team leaders as a benchmark and a means of reflect that we're providing to students, students as much as possible. Obviously, we'll be reflecting on the feedback that you gave to us this evening as well. But one of the quotes from the addendum that we're holding on really tight to, and Jamie, you alluded this to in regards to the mental health piece, is that it's imperative that as we focus our attention squarely, squarely on the quality of teaching and learning that's occurring, we're focusing just as much attention on removing the barriers that come in its way. And that comes with either mental health, device connectivity, teacher expertise, their content. So really trying to reflect on those at all levels and making sure we're just continue to make a better instructional model as time goes on. And we continue to be highly reflective in what it is that we're implementing. So we're doing a lot of work with CILs, team leaders, as well as administration on trying to make some of those improvements. So I'll keep, keep you informed. I also will most likely, if not at the next board meeting, but maybe the one after that, have a tech rep come with me to talk to you about device deployment and some software updates. I see a hand from Jamie.
Just want to say how good device deployment went this week. I picked up my little first grader's iPad. It was easy. It was so simple. And they were so great when you picked them up. It was in and out really quick. So kudos to everybody who's doing that. It was really easy.
Excellent.
Okay, is that it, Amy? Thanks. Mariana?
Hi. Attached, I think in your agenda, not sure if you saw it, was today Jackie attached the update for the school construction grant payments. So you'll see on that document, to date, we've received just a little over $3 million. I have one more progress, one more payment request to put in. It won't be for much because the state doesn't let you put in for more than 85% of the cost of the construction until you do the final, the final paperwork and closeout, which will be done or I'll initiate it once, you know, the school board accepts the project is complete, which then triggers the audit. Oh, let me see, Jamie has a question. Oh. I think Jamie has a question on that.
Oh, yeah.
When you're done, when you're done.
He wanted me to stop, sorry. So anyway, so that, that's really it. I don't know if any of you are aware, but you know, our reimbursement, I think you guys were aware of it way back when, but we have the space standards limitations where our grant is reduced because God, the space standards are so old. I'm not sure why they haven't updated them. But, you know, based, they, they do a calculation on what your square footage per student should be versus what you have. And if it's, if it's lower than what they say it's supposed to be, then they apply a reduction to your grant reimbursement. So that's another reason why some of that, so it's not as high as, you know, we would anticipate.
Good. Okay. Jamie, now Jamie.
Okay, so two questions. The first one is, is how much more grant money are we possibly looking at?
I'm, I'm meeting with, because I wasn't here when the ineligible costs were done. So I'm actually going to try to meet with Al Jankunsky, the architect, either Friday or early next week. So I can get a good number on what the ineligible. or early next week, so I can get a, a good number on what the ineligible costs are, so that I can project what we will have, because I need to get that number to Anna as well, because she needs to record it on her side as applicable at the town side. So I'm hoping to have that early next week, Jamie.
All right. And then my second question is, I saw an article in the day, which I didn't read because I don't pay for the day, so I can't read it. But the article was about Grotten using last year's numbers for next year's money on students for money from the state enrollment numbers. Grotten is going to use, or is trying to use last year's numbers for next year's money from the state because everybody's numbers are off this year. Have we heard anything? If we're allowed to do that?
I, I'm, I'm not, I, I'll have to take a look.
Like I said, I didn't read the article because I don't pay for the day papers, so can read it. But that was, it had the article, the title of the article was that Grotten is petitioning to use last year's numbers for next year's money. So I don't know if that's something we're looking into or if we can look into.
I, I can.
Candace, did you want to say something?
They are, they are, they have petitioned to request to use last year's numbers because the fear is, is that these numbers are so skewed. Parents are homeschooling and all these different things. They're afraid that they're not going to get the funding. So I do believe that they have petitions. So it is something worth looking into. Mariana?
Yeah, I can look into it. I'm guessing it's probably for the ECS grant. They do get a substantial ECS grant from, from the state, so that could be why they're doing that. So I'll take.
All right. I was just, like I said, I couldn't read the article, but I'm hoping it's something maybe that we can all do, since the whole state, I think their numbers are all going to be off this year as opposed to last year's. Because a lot of us, what did Amy say? We have 322 virtual Vikings, but I don't know how many kids have gone homeschool. I don't know if you remember that number, if it's gone up or it's changed any from the last time we talked about it, but.
Thirty-seven.
And then you have kids who we think that we kept, kindergartners who didn't come to school. They stayed off, let alone what new families moved in and didn't enroll and just took the time off. So it's worth looking into.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. Good. Is that it, Mariana?
That was it for me, you know, again, continuing where I'm working on the budget and audits and, you know, the time and attendance module, so.
Okay, good. See, committee reports. I know that there, your guys are working on a AAA commit, committee meeting date. That's good. And I don't think there are any, any other reports. So that brings us down to board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody have a comment or future agenda topic? I see Candace got her hand up, and Barry, did you have something too? Did? Go ahead.
Candace goes first.
Thank you, thank you. No worries. Well, first, I want to thank everybody, right? I mean, everybody's working triple time and trying to do the very best that they can. I want to thank you for your commitment and your dedication to all of our students here, all of our teachers, and just continuing to try and listen and shift and do the very best. I know that it's hard, but I'm incredibly thankful for you and all that you do. I also want you to know that there are others that are very thankful for the things that you do, and I know quite often you may hear quite a bit of, you know, the concerns and yes, complaints, and sometimes they're, they're nice complaints, but sometimes they're not valid nonetheless. But there are also some incredible people here in town that are very thankful for everything that you are doing and have done, and the commitment to continue to, to shift and, and really try to find the balance that's best here for us. And I thank you. With that, I want to say the expansion of the tech help, I think, has been very helpful. I hope, yes, okay. I think that that's going to be great to, to help with any backlog and for immediate help and all of those good things. I was going to put a plug in for my AAA, so I thank you for that. And I'd also like to just suggest, I know that it's difficult to be in person, but I do want to say that I would like to meet in person as much as possible. And for those that are feeling uncomfortable, or there's been a moment where you have to, you know, kind of take a break because you're not sure about other things, and zoom in, that's great. Maybe if we can get back into our room, possibly over at the high school, would be great. You know, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I possibly can. There was only really one issue that I had this last meeting, and of course, I was going to attend, but it was, I just didn't know if I was going to be able to be there in person. It just depended upon a result, right? And I wanted to be as responsible as possible. And what if, you know, we, we had a positive case, right? So you just don't want to mess around with that kind of stuff. So being responsible is great. But if we could try to do that, that would be really awesome.
Thanks, Candace. Barry?
Want to expand upon that topic I brought up earlier about as we move forward into the budget documents, I'd still think that we would benefit if we could say this is the outcome we have for our district. And it's, when I talk about that, I don't think it's a arcane matter. I think it's very tangible and we can do it very easily. This is not the answer, but this is just an example of where discussion could go on that. The CAS is just recently, this week, updated and revised a social, social emotional learning model. And I looked at, and I read through their revision, and they're very interesting. And as you know, the social emotional learning model basically says, you know, there are three rings on the outside of the model that talk about the environment, that there are three dimensions of it, just basically put kids at a safe environment that's going to support their learning, and there are things that we could do to that. If we adopted something like that as our outcome measure, we could certainly very easily talk about how and how and why we're doing the instructional models where they are in person or virtual in a way to make sure the kids feel that the environment for kids' learning is safe. At the center of the model are four growth areas. For self, it's basically self-decision-making, self-responsibility, social justice, and social justice, and I can't remember. Effective communication, and I can't remember the, but mostly, those are five growth areas. If we adopted something like the Black Lives Matter issue, we could fold that very easily into those growth areas and to the environmental area of the social emotional learning model. Because in the revised model, there's great, great deal of the language focuses specifically on equity and social justice. So again, the issue that I'm trying to bring up is rather than having us, as I read last year, having 52 or 68 different independent variables out there for the school system. If we could come up with a dependent variable, as we do all these independent variables, so do this, that, and the other initiative, there is something we are trying to focus on, and we could benefit by making it very, very explicit. You know, and again, this is just an example that we could say as a district, we are focused in on the social emotional learning model that has the environment and has these five growth dimensions to it. And everything we're doing on the, to deal with the pandemic, to deal with the Black Lives Matter issue, to deal with the other issues are focused in on moving this dependent variable. And so that's just, that's what I think we really need to in a district. And then, you know, I just wanted to, that as I try to advocate for that, I'm trying to advocate so that we can have basically make our district the best one in the state. And by doing so, we can say we're a district, and this is where we're sharply focused, and here are the things we're doing to get us there.
Okay, good. Barry, did you say that you had something, something you could share with, with the board on that?
Well, it's on the, okay, I, I certainly can do that because it's came up on the oh, the CAS site or the transformative learning site where they came up with the revised model this week of the social emotional learning model. I can certainly send you the link, and we all can read it. Because it does, they focused it a little bit more on, more so in the past, on issues of social justice and equity. And I could, I could send that out to you.
Yeah, what, yeah. Why don't you forward it to, yeah, forward it to Jackie, and she can send, send it out to all of us, so, or whatever. That would, that'd be fine.
Makes me curious to see. You said Castle, right, Barry?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's, yeah, they just, they released it this week. It's a, it's a revised model, the revised SCL model.
Got it. Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay, I, I certainly want to echo what Candace said, and I want to thank everybody. This is, this, these are not easy times. This is just, you know, it's, and everything's going in, in different directions. And Jeff and your team, I, I think you guys are, are trying to do your very, very best, and, and I think that we will continue to evolve and modify and, and move forward. And hopefully, I just hope everything's going to work out here for everyone. So, but thanks, thanks so much for all you do.
We'll keep adding. Thanks for the feedback.
Yep. Okay, with that, I guess that's it, eh? Anybody want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Candace second says, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye and waving goodbye. Thanks so much.